Good evening all, and welcome to the inauguration ceremony for elected officials from the November 7th, 2021 election. Before we can begin, I'd ask everyone to please turn off your phone. Okay, with that said, may we have the presentation of the colors, please? Okay, may we have now the posting of the colors. I ask all who remain standing, and please join in very loudly, the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now, if I ask, Burrit Tremblay, the Chaplain for the Braintree Veterans Council, come forward for the invocation. Uncover. I want to wish you, everybody here, a very happy New Year, very prosperous. For the privilege of serving you in our country, oh God, we thank you. As we invoke your blessings upon all gathered here, we particularly ask your blessing upon the one we honor. Grant them your wisdom and help them lead us throughout the year. Give us your grace to be an extension of their leadership. In guidance and together, we will be used to you for the betterment of our town, together for you and our country. Amen.
Amen.
Cover. At this time, the Braintree Police Department color card will be exiting the auditorium. Please be seated. Thank you for being here this evening, and it's with great pleasure, I once again have the opportunity and the honor of presenting our Master of Ceremonies from my hometown. We didn't live too far down the street from each other, and every year when he comes to the ceremonies here, he visits his constituents from South Boston, because many people from South Boston have moved to this wonderful town of ours in Braintree. I'd like to introduce now Congressman Stephen Lynch.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Jim. Reverend clergy, Chaplain Tremblay, thank you for your blessing. My colleagues in government, Mayor Kokoros, members of the Town Council, my colleagues in government who are currently in government and also our about-to-be colleagues in government. I have the wonderful honor, first of all, I want to say thank you for the mayor for allowing me to come here and to act again as Master of Ceremonies for this wonderful occasion. This is really history in the making, right? We've been doing this for, well, since 1640 in the town of Braintree. Not me personally, but this process of electing our townspeople to take care and administering the affairs of the town of Braintree has been going on for a long, long time and has been performed by some of our country's greatest heroes and most distinguished citizens. And it is in that context that we gather here tonight. I have the wonderful honor of representing 21 towns and three cities, but I have to be honest that coming to Braintree is like coming home. It's probably because so many of my relatives live here now. They moved from South Boston and Dorchester years ago in search of off-street parking, and they found what they were looking for in good schools and a good place to live with good neighbors. Like I say, they found what they're looking for, and they continue to live their dream. I want to recognize several of my colleagues who are in attendance here tonight. First of all, I want to recognize my dear, dear friend and your former mayor, Mayor Joe Sullivan is here with us. Thank you, Joe. I also want to recognize Senator John Keenan. Senator Walter Timblety. Everybody's got masks on, I'm sorry. And Representative Mark Cusack is also in attendance. I have a special relationship with the town of Braintree. You know, I spend four or five days a week in Washington, D.C., and so I really do rely, in the case of Braintree, on the current representative, Mark Cusack, our senators, and especially Mayor Kokoros, to really make sure that we're advocating properly on behalf of the town of Braintree. And this past couple of years since the onset of COVID has been a very, very difficult and challenging time because of the reduced tax revenues for the town of Braintree, because so many businesses are operating at a deficit, because of the added needs that we've had, because of the conditions created by COVID. There's been, I think, a special need for the federal government and the congressional delegation to work even more closely with our local leadership, both at the local level and the state level. And I'm enormously proud to say that my experience in working with Mayor Kokoros and our state delegation, as well as Town Council members and the Braintree Light Division, the trustees of Thayer Library, the school committee, right across the board, has been a pleasure for me. And I think the success in that, that whole process, has really, I think, served Braintree well. At a time when we had very little tax revenues at the state level, very little tax revenue at the local level because of the business curtailment, we were able to come together. And through the CARES Act, which principally addressed the loss in revenue that the town of Braintree was having during the early stages of this pandemic and throughout, as well as the health threats to our schools and our ability to operate either in hybrid capacity in our school system, all of that was addressed because of the way that your local representatives at the town level and at the state level were able to advocate on your behalf in Washington, D.C. And I'm enormously proud of the millions of dollars we were able to bring back as a result of their good work, what the guidance of Mayor Kokoros really, I think, helped Braintree. Let's put it this way, I have 21 towns and three cities that I represent. No town is as well-run on a fiscal and as a community as is the town of Braintree. And you owe that to your local representatives at the state level, the State House and the Senate, but also the people who serve the town of Braintree, your administrators, your mayor, your Town Council, those people who, it's really, they do thankless jobs sometimes behind the scenes, but I really do believe they deserve your recognition and your appreciation. Thank you. I know we have much to do tonight, so I want to thank you for allowing me to be the Master of Ceremonies. I also want to just thank you personally. You know, I know we're going through a rough patch in this country. There's a lot of division in many cases on political lines, but I just want to tell you, it is an enormous honor. It is the greatest honor of my life to be able to go to Washington, D.C. and to represent the families of Braintree in the United States Capitol. And I am thankful for that each and every day. I try each and every day to reach and to meet your highest expectations. I may not always succeed, but that is my goal. And I want to thank you for that great honor that you've given me once again. So with that, from my family to yours, I want to wish everyone in Braintree a healthy, a safe, and a blessed New Year. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we're going to be getting the process of the oath of office for each of the races, but it gives me, again, with great honor, I present Mayor Kokoros, who will be administering the oath of office to all our elected officials.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. Thank you, Congressman. I'd like to just start off, first of all, good evening. How's everyone doing tonight? Happy New Year. It's my honor and pleasure to be here alongside Congressman Stephen Lynch to square into office the town of Braintree's newly-elected officials of the Town Council, School Committee, Thayer Public Library Board of Trustees, Electric Light Board, and Housing Authority. And I'd also like to take a moment just to recognize and thank our Braintree Veteran Council Honor Guard, as well as our Braintree Police Department Honor Guard. Before we begin swearing in, I just want to take a moment to thank the Congressman for being here this evening and welcoming our newly-elected officials as they begin, or for some, continue their commitment to public service. After working as an ironworker for 18 years, Congressman Lynch entered public service in 1994, when he was elected to the Massachusetts House of Representatives. Within a little over a year, he was elected to the Massachusetts State Senate in a special election. In October of 2001, the Congressman was first sworn in to the United States Congress and has continued to serve Braintree, the cities of Boston, Brockton, and Quincy, and 20 other towns in southeastern Massachusetts with dignity and respect. We are extremely fortunate to have Congressman Lynch here with us tonight and serving as a representative in Congress. I want to extend my deepest thanks to him for setting such an excellent example of how our local officials can best serve the Braintree community. I want you to know, Congressman, that you always have a home here in Braintree. We just can't get him to pay the price for a house in Braintree. I don't know. Anyway, I'd like to recognize our newly-elected officials, who have offered their expertise, skills, and services to the people of Braintree and our community as a whole. I stood in your shoes for nearly three decades ago, and I know that the decision to serve is not an easy one and one that should not be taken lightly. It's a lot of late-night meetings and missed dinners and a number of other commitments that need to be made and sacrifices. The commitment that you have made to our residents is commendable, and for that, I thank you. And I also want to extend my thanks to your families, because like my wife Denise in the back of the room there, there's a lot of nights that she had to take care of everything, including when our children were very young. So, thank you to the families. Thank you, Denise. I just want to say, as elected, as an elected official of the town of Braintree, you'll be tasked with representing your constituents and offering your own ideas, thoughts, and opinions to help govern our town. As an elected official, you will be joining a distinguished group of elected officials who have served our community, some even reaching the highest political office in our nation's capital. And I certainly look forward to working with each and every one of you throughout your terms. So now, as we enter the 14th year of the town's new form of government, it is my honor and privilege to conduct the swearing-in ceremony for our new elected officials.
I would like to invite the members of the Electric Light Board, James P. Regan and Thomas J. Reynolds, to step forward to take the oath of office.
I, James Regan. Do solemnly swear that faithfully and impartially perform all the duties and responsibilities incumbent upon me by my election as a member of the Braintree Municipal Light Board in accordance with the bylaws and ordinances of the town of Braintree and the general laws of the Commonwealth. So help me God. Thank you. Congratulations.
And next, we'll have members of the trustees of the Thayer Library. I realize because of COVID that several of the members expressed concerns about coming here tonight, but we do have Rachel M. Duffy. Would Rachel please step forward for accepting the oath of office?
I, Rachel Duffy, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform all the duties and responsibilities incumbent upon me by my election as a member of the Braintree Thayer Library trustee in accordance with the bylaws and ordinances of the town of Braintree and the general laws of the Commonwealth. So help me God. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to invite the members of the school committee, Lisa Fisk Heager, Matthew K. Lynch, and Kathleen Dreyer Tuffy, to come forward to take the oath of office. Thank you.
I, Lisa Fisk Heager.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
And responsibilities.
And responsibilities.
Occombe upon me.
Occombe upon me.
By my election.
By my election.
As a member.
As a member.
Of the Braintree School Committee.
Of the Braintree School Committee.
In accordance with.
In accordance with.
The bylaws and ordinances.
The bylaws and ordinances.
Of the town of Braintree.
Of the town of Braintree.
And the general laws.
And the general laws.
Of the Commonwealth.
Of the Commonwealth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Next, I would like to invite the members of Town Council, Shannon Hume, Counselor-at-Lodge, David Ringus, Counselor-at-Lodge, Charlie Ryan, Counselor-at-Lodge, Julia Camille Flaherty, Counselor District One, Joseph H. Reynolds, Counselor District Two, Elizabeth Maglio, Counselor District Three, Meredith Berrika, Counselor District Five, and Lawrence C. Mackin Jr., Counselor District Six, to step forward to take the oath of office.
I, Charles Ryan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
And responsibilities.
And responsibilities.
Incumbent upon me.
By my election.
As a member of the Braintree Town Council.
In accordance with.
The bylaws and ordinances.
Of the town of Braintree.
And the general laws.
Of the Commonwealth.
So help me God. Congratulations.
Congratulations. At this time, I'd like to invite Burrit Tremblay back to do benediction. Chaplain. Uncover. Let us depart in peace and in love, in charity with our neighbors. May we be joined together in the common goal of service of our God and our country. Let us drive safely and carefully to our homes, and may God's blessing be with us all. Amen. Cover. Malfunctioning mic, I guess. I just want to remind everyone, after this meeting, we're going to take a 15-minute recess, and if you'd like to hang around, we're going to have the reorganization of the Braintree Town Council. All right? So with that, please stand and retire at the colors, please. So with that, please stand and retire at the callers, please. On behalf of the Town of Braintree, the Mayor's Office, my staff, I want to thank everyone for being here this evening, and I wish all a healthy and safe 2022 season. Thank you. Good night. Okay, good evening, all.
Good evening.
We are here this evening for the reorganization of the Braintree Town Council. With that, I'd like to call the council meeting for January 3, 2022, to order on a roll call vote, please.
Councillor O'Brien, you there?
Yeah.
Thank you. Going to do a roll call for the meeting. Councillor Berica.
Here.
Councillor Flaherty.
Here.
Councillor Hume.
Here.
Councillor Mackin.
Here.
Councillor Maglio.
Here.
Councillor O'Brien.
Present.
Councillor Reynolds.
Present.
Councillor Ringus.
Here.
Councillor Ryan.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. With any reorganization, it's essentially telling us it's a new beginning. But as part of a new beginning, there has been an ending. And with that, Councillor Hume has served the council for the last two years. I would offer her the floor if she'd like to make some remarks.
You would? Thank you very much. Clerk Casey, thank you to you and your staff for the last two years. I know it hasn't been an easy one. You've had many elections, and COVID wasn't easy. The last two years, it's been an honor for me to serve as the council president. As the mayor said earlier, it's always hard on the family. I've been an elected official for 14 years now, and my kids and my mother are here tonight. My son Noel, my daughter Emma, and Connor, Kathy Dooley, John Coyne, Daryl O'Sullivan are all here tonight, so I thank all of them for their support. It isn't always easy, but I wouldn't have been able to do this without all them. We can't do this without the residents. The residents are the ones who put us here into elected office, so whether you go out and you vote, you call us, you attend our meetings or whatever, it does make a difference. I thank you for that. I just want to thank all my fellow councillors, past, present, and our new councillors here tonight. We do have former councillor Lee Dingee and Hank Joyce with us. Thank you for all your service throughout the years. And our very first mayor, Mayor Sullivan, who I am happy to call my friend after all these years. I also want to thank B-CAM, because without B-CAM, our meetings wouldn't have been able to be televised, not only under normal circumstances, but particularly the last two years during COVID, where B-CAM had our meetings on YouTube, and we got set up on Zoom, which was no easy task. Sue Semino worked collaboratively with B-CAM. They spent many hours rewiring Town Hall, too, so when we were back in person meetings, it was clearer and better. So thank you to Bill Needham for always being at our council meetings over all these years, Jerry Komic and Wes Ray. And a particular thank you goes to Sue Semino, the clerk of the council. Without Sue... Without Sue, we would not be as prepared as we are at our meetings. Sue is the one who is here full-time in Town Hall, day in and day out, making sure all of our legal notices are posted, and everything that needs to be done is done. And, but more importantly, Sue's became a good friend of mine, and for that, I am grateful and more thankful. And I have something for you. I do have a lot of thank you, so bear with me. There's a lot to be thankful for. But Mayor Kokoros to you and to Chief of Staff Nicole Taub. Your leadership has been outstanding throughout this. This was no easy. One, your first time being mayor, three months into the job and COVID strikes, and everything we knew was turned upside down, and you made it through. We have so many things, so many exciting things I'm going to talk about in a minute, but because of your leadership, we still are and continue to be a great town, so I thank you for all that. And Chief of Staff Taub for all your leadership in helping the council and supporting us with all the information you've provided to us. Mary Beth McGrath, the Director of Municipal Licenses and Inspections, she was at almost every single one of our meetings throughout this pandemic, giving us updates, giving us pertinent information, educating not only the council but all the residents. She did not need to be at these meetings. She chose to be at these meetings. Her, along with all the school nurses, provided support to the thousands of our students, to our educators, to our staff, providing accurate information. And they were here, they were at one meeting. But Mary Beth McGrath was at every single meeting of ours. I'm grateful to that. I'd be remiss without thanking our teachers, because all of us, no matter what your job is or what your role is, COVID was difficult, for the teachers were presented with educating in a remote world, which we've never done before. And everything they knew, they were never trained for this, or maybe some of them will. I won't say that. Maybe some of them will. But a huge, I think we owe a round of applause to our teachers for continuing to educate our thousands of students, and COVID's still going on, so thank you. To our police and fire, we have the best first responders in the state. There's nobody who can disagree with us. They were here. They were here every day, helping our residents, supporting our residents, keeping us safe no matter what. That does not change. COVID did not change that. They were there, willing and able to help, and they did. In June of this last year, as you all remember, the police department suffered a huge loss when our own officer, K-9 Kit, lost his life in doing his job. But in that job, in giving his life in the line of duty, he saved three of our officers, which without our K-9 unit and the funding that the mayor and the council have supported for our police, it might have been a very different outcome. So in that incident, Officers William Cushion, Richard Seibert, and Matthew Donahue were injured responding to a call to protect all of the residents of Braintree. They did this as part of their job, but it was part of their service to the town. And I'm grateful for their service to the town and protecting all of us. Many families have struggled and lost loved ones and fell on hard times during this pandemic. Many are still struggling. But Braintree answered the call to support so many, like we have always done. This is nothing new to Braintree. If you're from Braintree, you know the Braintree way. Braintree, the one thing that is unique to Braintree that no other community can say is we're always there for each other. We're there for your neighbor. We're there for your friend. You're there for strangers. We are always there for anybody, no matter what. There's always an outpouring of support when somebody's in need in this community. We saw that throughout the pandemic, whether you saw people getting groceries for others, dropping off medicine, helping with childcare when somebody came down with COVID and was in the hospital. We also saw people providing paper towels and toilet paper when that was in short supply. That was only just a year ago. And many other generous acts throughout our community. Braintree always stands up and helps each other. Our businesses were also hard-hit, not only the residents, but particularly our small businesses. And in the beginning, the council reached out to these small business owners to say, what can we do? Because as many of you know, they were all shut down. They needed people to frequent their business. They needed people to buy a gift certificate if they weren't comfortable, or give them a donation, get takeout, order food. Go, when dining was possible, go dine in. Those businesses still need our help, and those businesses are the heart of this community. Without our small businesses, Braintree would not be the community we are. The small businesses donate to the charitable organizations, to the people in need, to our schools, to our sporting events. I'm sure every single one of you in this audience who is listening at home has in some way benefited or received something from a small business owner in this community. And so to thank them, go in and say thank you, but frequent their establishment and shop there or dine there, or whatever you can to do your help, and spread the word. When you've been there or a new restaurant or small business opens, tell your friends. Over the last few years, we've also suffered several losses amongst our residents, but some notably, and this isn't to take away from anybody else, but some especially near and dear to my heart and many of us here in the room, Nelson Chin, Officer Bill Veroso, Laurie Melciando, Marty McPherson, and there were many, many more residents we lost throughout the year. So if we could just take a moment of silence for all of them, please. Thank you. Now, despite all these challenges, we've had so many good things happen in this community. One, all of you here tonight are a huge part of this community and a great asset to this town. But we built a brand-new school up at East Middle School and re-rehabbed the existing. That's never been done to any town building since the 1970s. We're building a brand-new South Middle School and passed the very first debt exclusion ever. Lisa Heager, former chair of the school committee, chaired that to get that override passed. And those two projects were started by Ms. Heager, a chair of the school committee, and Joe Sullivan, the former mayor, on that board. We have some school committee members here tonight, too, I believe, still. Kelly Cobb, the mayor. But Dirty Jim was rehabbed. If you haven't seen it, you have to go by and see it. Our Hundred Roads program is still going strong. That started with the new former government under Joe Sullivan, and Mayor Kokoros is continuing that. Renovated 90 Pond Street for new town offices. We have our own golf course, our own municipal light board. We voted, we swore in a couple of light board members earlier tonight. We have so many parks and playgrounds. Our own water and sewer department. The children's room over at the library was renovated. Here in Town Hall, as we sit here tonight, you can look around, not only in this room, but many rooms throughout. That was renovated, and upgrades made by our very own facilities department. We have so many assets in this town, so many things to be thankful for, so many things to be grateful for. And all that could not happen without the staff in every single department we have and the staff that's hired, whether it be, you know, the department heads. We have a couple of department heads here tonight. Jim Arsenal is here with us tonight. Chris Griffin is here. Anybody else I miss, and I apologize. But with that said, I am so grateful to be part of this town. I have been so fortunate to sit on this council for eight years now and serve as the president for the last two years. And I have learned so much from each and every one of you, past councillors, present councillors, and look forward to working with all the new ones and all the the mayor's office and department heads, too. Braintree always has been a great community. It still is. It still will be. And I thank you all for that. Thank you.
Before we move to the next item, Clerk of the Council Sue Semino, I would like to make a presentation.
I also just want to say it's been a pleasure working so closely with you as council president. And on behalf of the Braintree Town Council, I'd like to present you with this plaque, which states, "In appreciation of your dedication and service to the Town of Braintree, Shannon L. Hume, First Woman Council President, Braintree Town Council, 2020 to 2022."
And now, I would like to introduce Mayor Kokoros, who would like to say a few words.
Thank you. President Hume, just wanted to express my thanks for all of the hard work that you've done as president. Having been on the council in the past and had served in the role of president, I don't think anyone could ever have imagined stepping in and having a pandemic immediately take place. It was your support and guidance and leadership on the council that helped us move forward the debt exclusion so that we could get the funding source to build the New South, and that was through your leadership as council president. And so many, many, many conversations over the last two years. And, you know, sometimes I had good news, but most of the time, it was bad news, unfortunately. And, you know, I think that it speaks volumes for how great a leader you are and how good a person you are as to how you were able to manage such a tough time and bring everyone together. You had new council members. When I was council president, we had, you know, a pretty established group of individuals, and you had to take the lead and really help not only educate, but help bring people together. And there was so much going on in the world, and you were able to bring unity and bring folks together. And I just want everyone to understand that our relationship and friendship that has been forged over the years is much stronger now. Having worked with you directly for two years, you as council president, and as mayor, I truly appreciate everything that you've done for the last two years. And I just want to say, on behalf of myself, my staff, and the entire Town of Braintree, thank you.
And then I have one last speaker, Senator Timmeltie.
Mr. Clerk, thank you very much. And it's my distinct privilege and pleasure to be here tonight to celebrate the swearing-in, this continuation of this wonderful government here in the Town of Braintree. We're all in agreement here tonight, my colleagues in government, Senator Keenan, Representative Cusack, the mayor, our former mayor. The citizens of Braintree deserve the very best. And with government in this town and the people who continually step up every two years, as embodied by every person who was sworn in tonight, we get the very best here in Braintree. And I must say, President Hume, your leadership of this council has been exemplary for the past two years. You have been a steady hand, a hand of integrity, wisdom, courage, and virtue. So with that, we thank you for everything you've done for this town, for the region. Braintree is an integral part of the South Shore. So what Braintree Town Government has a great effect on all of its surrounding towns here on the South Shore, and that is in large part because of the leadership in government, many of whom, you have the legends, as I would say, of baseball who are here tonight, whether it be Mayor Sullivan, Councillor Joyce, Councillor Dingee, and you have folks who here are stepping forward today and in the past, and you have been that leader for two years. So with that, Council Hume, President Hume, thank you for your friendship. Your work will continue. Our work collectively will continue. And with that, we'll all be better for it. So thank you and very much. Congratulations to your family, because we all know that public service is a shared sacrifice. And congratulations to all. And congratulations to all our new counselors tonight.
Okay, Section 8-10 of the Braintree Charter brings us here this evening. It requires councilors present to reorganize by electing a president and a vice president in January on each even-numbered month. And I state of the word "present." Now, as we all know, there are nine counselors, and there's only eight present here. The ninth counselor is participating in this meeting via telephone. I swore in Counselor O'Brien today at 1:00. So he is a duly-elected and sworn-in member of this body. So he is able to participate in this meeting and participate in any of the votes that may occur this evening. The Charter also requires the town clerk to preside over the reorganization of the town councily. And immediately after the council president is elected and has administered the oath of office to the new leadership, is to turn the meeting over to that council president, who then will preside over the meeting and the nomination process for a vice president. The nominating process for the council president and the vice president will be conducted following these four rules. And I believe all of you all have a copy of the rules. To nominate a candidate, you must raise your hand. Voting will be conducted after nominations have been closed. Nominees will be presented for voting in the order they were nominated. And the first nominee to receive a majority of the yea votes of members voting shall be cleared the president or the vice president, as the case may be. With that said, is there a motion to open up nominations? This is just to open up the nominations.
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Hume, seconded by Counselor Ryan on a roll call. Vote, please.
Counselor Berica?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Mackin?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
With all present, does a member of this board request to place a candidate's name for nomination? I see Counselor Hume's hand first.
I nominate Counselor Berica.
Counselor Berica was nominated. Does Counselor Berica accept the nomination?
Yes, I do.
Does another member of this party like to making the second nomination? Seeing none, a motion to close nominations would be in order.
Motion to close.
Motion to close by Counselor Hume?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Ryan. All in favor on a roll call, please.
To close nominations, Counselor Berica?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Mackin?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio?
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien?
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
I put before this body a motion to accept by acclamation the nomination of Counselor Berica to serve as president of this Braintree Town Council for the year 2022 and 2023. On a roll call vote, to accept by acclamation.
Counselor Berica?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Mackin?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio?
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien? Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus? Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Seven in favor, one no, one abstain.
With the vote as seven, one, and one, we said?
Abstain.
One abstain. I announce Counselor Berica is the new council president, only upon her taking the oath. So if I could ask her to stand? Please, aye, state your name.
I'm Meredith Berica.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear?
That I will faithfully and impartially?
That I will faithfully and impartially?
Perform all the duties and responsibilities?
Perform all the duties and responsibilities?
Incumbent upon me?
Incumbent upon me?
By my election as council president?
By my election as council president?
Of the Braintree Town Council?
The Braintree Town Council?
In accordance with the bylaws and ordinances?
In accordance with the bylaws and ordinances?
Of the town of Braintree?
Of the town of Braintree?
The council rules of order?
The council rules of order?
And the general laws of the Commonwealth?
And the general laws of the Commonwealth?
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Just glad I wasn't doing electrical work then. Okay, at this point in time in the process, Council President Berica will be taking control of the meeting, but I offer her a few minutes to make some comments if she would like.
Thank you, Clerk Casey, and thank you to my colleagues for placing your confidence in me to lead the council forward into the new year and the next term. I am humbled and honored. Thank you to former President Hume for confidently navigating the council through the last term, a period of previously unimaginable unease and upheaval. And as we begin 2022, may we remember we are all driven by a common goal, to do the people's work and create positive change in our community. And while there will be times when we choose different paths, we are all headed to the same destination. As council president, I look forward to collaborating with you, working together, and paving the way along these roads to ensure Braintree's residents are well-served. As we begin the new term, our purpose is clear, to govern with both wisdom and compassion. And I cannot wait to get started, working alongside all of you. The business at hand, is there a motion to open nominations for vice president?
So moved, Madam President.
Thank you. We've had a motion from Counselor Ringus and seconded from Counselor Ryan. Clerk Semino, roll call vote, please.
To open nominations, Counselor Berica?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Mackin?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio?
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien?
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, Clerk Semino. Does a member of this body request to place a candidate's name for nomination? Counselor Flaherty?
I'd like to nominate Counselor Ryan.
Thank you very much. And Counselor Ryan, do you accept this nomination?
I do, thank you.
Are there other nominations for vice president? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to close the nominations?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Ringus, seconded by Counselor Flaherty. Clerk Semino, roll call vote, please.
To close nominations, Counselor Berica?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Mackin?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio?
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien?
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. Okay. Now we, sorry. Is there a motion, and there's a motion and a second, to accept by acclamation the nomination of Counselor Ryan as vice president?
So moved, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Ringus. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Clerk Semino, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Berica?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Mackin?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien? Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
That's eight in favor, one opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Clerk Semino.[1705.01][1705.01](APPLAUSE). Okay, that ends this evening's proceedings. Our next meeting will be on Tuesday, January 18th, 2022, at 7:30 PM. Thank you, as always, to our team from B-CAM for televising this and streaming it on YouTube. And now I will ask, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Ringus. Clerk Semino, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Berica?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Mackin?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio?
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien?
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
All in favor to adjourn?
Thank you very much. The meeting is adjourned.[1762.01][1762.01](APPLAUSE).
Thank you.